All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Just a note to attendees in the committee that this meeting is being recorded. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at seven P M. on Monday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We have a hearing this evening that'll start at seven oh five, which is for the F Y twenty-two slash twenty-three budget. And then we're going to postpone the public hearing for the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three school choice. We'll do that at a subsequent meeting. So apologies to anybody who wished to speak to that this evening, but we will put that on a future agenda. All interested persons for the budget hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard for or against the whole or any part of the proposed budget. And then we'll have our normal school committee meeting or the rest of our normal school committee meeting following the budget hearing. Just because we do have a couple of minutes before we can open the budget hearing. I will move to the consent agenda and take a motion to approve that and we'll get some housekeeping out of the way if that's all right with folks.
So moved.
Second.
I don't know who the second was.
You can give it to you.
All right, I will. So Tom and June, all right, so this is for the consent agenda. Oh, actually, sorry, I did not do a roll call. So I will go back and do that. We don't have Dave. I don't see Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
I don't see Mike. Or Susan, Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I'm here. So back to the motion apologies for that. So this is to approve the consent agenda, Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. I believe Robin was having audio issues. Superintendent, are you aware of any? Public communications requests this evening?
There were none as of this afternoon.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna give it the thirty more seconds and then we'll open up the. All right, I've got seven oh five. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the F Y twenty-two dash twenty-three proposed budget. Just for those that have not been through this before, so the superintendent is going to present an overview of the proposed budget for our next fiscal year. The public will have the opportunity to address the school committee relative to that proposed budget. Again, you can speak for or against or ask questions or make comments on that. The budget was has been available on the website. For a few days now, I think back on Thursday, it was posted and hard copies were also available at Central Office. So. We'll first have the superintendent present an overview. The committee will have some discussion. We'll open it up to the public and then any other discussions and then we'll close the hearing. For those that do wish to speak when the time comes, if you could use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I believe attendees should have that. Then we will. Promote you to to be able to speak at the meeting and we'll go through it that way. Any questions from the committee before we get started? All right, Superintendent, I'll turn over to you.
Nancy, can we get the slideshow into presentation form, please?
I'm just waiting for Robin to give me access to share my screen.
Just so everyone that's listening is aware that this slideshow is basically a. A broken down view of the budget narrative that was presented on January tenth, and that is on the website. It has been on the website for a few weeks now. So again, this is not new information. This is the information that we have been working from since January tenth. No additional modifications to the budget have happened. So thank you. And we can just go right to the first slide, Nancy, if you don't mind. So the focus for F Y twenty-three is it always has been is to continue to present a transparent and responsible budget that will meet the needs of students and staff. In the school district in this process was once again something that was initiated early on. With a series of budget summits between the district and town representatives this year, we held four budget summits. In October, November, December, and January, we can move on to the next slide. And the focus for next year hopefully is that we will begin planning for the endemic phase of COVID nineteen. That's something that we're all hopeful for. We will hopefully continue on with our in-person learning and continue on. With making advances in this process so that we can hopefully move on even with some of the restrictions we currently have in place will hopefully be removed. Moving into next year and we'll continue to utilize federal funds for student intervention. And plan to follow through with our strategic plan that was developed a couple of years ago, which has been slowed, obviously, due to the pandemic. You go to the next slide. The unknowns have always been the unknowns for North Middlesex and many, many regionals. And many school districts in general, the special ed transportation, that is something that is always an unknown. We generally get one bid for that. Annually, and we are held to the contractual price of the company that bids on that. And again. Pretty much every year we get one bid for the special ed transportation. So it's very difficult to negotiate prices when there's not when there's when there's no competition. Salaries and new positions, there is an educator shortage statewide. And finding educators that fall within our desired salary range may be difficult for some positions. Some other unknowns, while we did gain back about half of the homeschool students we lost due to COVID nineteen. We're unsure as to whether or not we're going to gain more students back for the next school year. So that's one of the reasons why we've asked to hold off. On school choice just until we get an idea as to the number of students that are coming back. To see if we go back to the pre-pandemic homeschool numbers and we're still about fifty students over what we were previously. Enrollments, the actual numbers are fluid. The kindergarten enrollment is projected, homeschool returns, and of course, we do have a number of move-ins. Due to foster families and other in just people that are new to the district annually coming in, and we do monitor that throughout. The summer, health insurance, the Fallon Plan is ending. And a hundred and nine staff on this plan will be switching to a new plan. So we're not sure how that will impact the health insurance number. And food service in F Y twenty-two, the USDA provided free meals to all students that is not yet determined. If that will continue into F Y twenty-three, but rumors are that that will continue. Can move on to the next slide, Nancy. So F Y twenty-three vision and priorities. We'll continue to work towards a program towards a programmatic consistency consistency that we have been working on at the elementary and middle levels. To again become a true K to twelve district where we are consistent and at all levels. It's really not an issue with the high school, but again, having the three elementaries and the two middles, just working towards having programmatic consistency so that everyone is prepared. When they enter the high school and have had similar experiences when it comes to academics. Examine all potential revenue sources that the district has at its disposal in order to fund additional enhancements. To build an equitable techn- technology infrastructure so that we can increase our purposeful use of technology to benefit students and staff. And then to continue the the implementation of our long-term vision for curriculum, instruction, assessment, and data analysis. Per pupil cost, I right now, North Middlesex is at just over sixteen thousand dollars per student. You can see that down below, it says North Middlesex Regional School District, two thousand and twenty per pupil cost is just over fourteen hundred dollars below the state average. We can move on to the next slide. And the overall budget picture for F Y twenty-three represents a three point oh six increase over F Y twenty-two. That's an increase of just over one point eight million dollars to just over sixty-one and a half million dollars for F Y twenty-three. And that also would include a change of five point seven six full-time equivalency or staff. To the to the budget. So we are asking for an increase of five point seven six staff members to the F Y twenty-two budget. The breakdown, hopefully, everyone is able to see this salary and contractual obligations and benefits. Those are all collective bargaining agreements and contracts that are in place. Two point five six percent. Again, it's a three point oh six percent increase. So. Salary contractual obligations and benefits takes up a pretty large chunk of that. Special education tuition expenses is just below point three percent. Transportation is at point two six percent. And then we have a list of other items as well from facility and security needs. Transfer to stabilization, technology expenses, curriculum and P D needs, school choice and charter assessment. And other items that would add to that three point zero six percent increase. But again, the the largest impact is the salary contractual obligations and benefits. For our contract for individually contracted employees and also our collective bargaining agreements for all five collective bargaining groups. Historical projections that Nancy, do you want to take over here, Nancy Haynes?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Super. So this is a tracking of the historical foundation enrollment, which is a little bit different than the. Actual students in the building at any given time, but it's very close. And essentially, this, this is from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty-three. What what changes have occurred in the various towns and as a district as a whole? So you can see that you can see the overall reduction over time in enrollment in the district, and this is something that's happening. Across the state, we're not the only ones in that kind of in the situation of a reduced enrollment. One of the big changes for this year is that the town of Ashby had an increase in students. They went from three hundred and forty-nine to three hundred and ninety-three. Which is, as you can see in historic for Ashby here, is pretty, pretty large jump for one year. We also each year submit our enrollment projections or we submit our enrollment. To N S D C and they do a projection for ten years out. So you can see the F Y twenty-one to. Twenty to twenty thirty-one rather level, although slight increase. Over time, but fairly level for the district as a whole. The district has a variety of funding sources, just going over this from the top level. We get state aid, which is the chapter seventy aid. We received transportation aid. Which is for any student greater than a mile and a half, we're reimbursed. The chart for regular ed students, we receive charter reimbursement, which is an offset for students that might be attending charter schools. And that's the total state aid calculation, which is for twenty-three, we're projecting based on the governor's numbers that have come out, twenty-one million. Eight thirty-nine, two ninety. So overall, a change of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in state aid and on the on the pot to the positive or one percent. Increase from state revenue. These are estimates that the governor has released. The the Senate and the House will go through their reiterations and those numbers could potentially change. With various. House and Senate. The only thing I didn't use the governor's numbers for was the chapter seventy-one transportation, which was that's, I believe, the governor's numbers was seventy-five percent reimbursement. I'm actually putting in eighty-five percent reimbursement. Which I think is, even though it's on the is higher than governor's numbers, I think we're likely to get that. So that's. That's one of the differences here. The district gets revenue from Medicaid reimbursement, our excess and deficiency, which is similar to a free cash in the towns. And school, which is we use to support the budget each year. We use school choice funding, which are for funds that are available when students choice into our district. And we have investment income. And as you can see, when we used some one-time money last year for curriculum of two sixty-two, eight forty-two. We take that out this year and you can see the reduction in the the source for district revenue. Next slide. The other component that helps fund the school budget is obviously that the local contribution and that's calculated using. A couple of different factors, enrollment being a component of how they calculate the minimum local contribution. And that's the the first setting there, first section there, and. As you can see, Ashby's minimum local contribution for next year is eight point five three percent. And that comes from a variety of sources. It it comes from the calculation of property values, income. The municipal growth factor for the town, which means like they use some of the local receipts such as building permits or. Motor vehicle excise goes into that as well. So so those those are the numbers that are released. Again, this is the governor's proposal. Those potentially could change, but probably and historically, they don't change too too much going forward. The amount above the minimum local is is calculated based on enrollment only, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then that gives us the total operating assessment. Next slide. I wanted to include this slide just for reference. This is just a summary that is put as part of the chapter seventy formula related to. The minimum local contribution. And again, it's just for a reference, but I wanted to include it so it was available if people had questions about that. Next slide. The other aspect aside of the. Town's local assessment is the transportation assessment. And the transportation assessment obviously is affect affected by whether the state is giving us a certain percentage of reimbursement. And that's based on that eighty-five percent reimbursement from the state and that's that's generally fair. Based on enrollment. And this, the next is a summary of both the operating and the transportation assessment, which is the total local revenue. And that's. On app is a five point six three percent increase, but again, you can see the effect. That the increase in the minimum local for Ashby and enrollment has on that number. So Ashby coming in very high at twelve point five nine, Pepperell at four point four nine, and Townsend at five percent even. Just a comment about the service. Service is going to change. These numbers are high at the moment. We have new numbers that are draft that are significantly lower. Mostly due to the way we had the funding of this most recent ban that just happened, actually. Settled on the fit, the fourth, February fourth, so we'll be updating those numbers shortly. Next line. The governor's budget that was released, I think I already mentioned, most of this included the chapter seventy formula. Those sometimes change once the House and Senate get them, but in general, they're they're not. They're not significant enough to tend to generally reset the budget, but we'll keep an eye on that. We also have our. C I C assessment, we did receive that. We haven't implemented that into the budget yet. But I believe we're going to be able to keep that that assessment number that's in the budget the same as it is. I mentioned the debt service already. We have state assessments that are a part of the governor's budget, the charter and choice assessments that will get updated. So those are going to change. We don't have estimates for next year's property and our workers' comp insurance yet. As Brad mentioned, we have additional staffing, potential changes or retirees as as the budget unfolds. And how what the reopening plan is for F Y twenty-two and twenty-three. And as well as the elementary enrollment levels. Again, we're using some estimates at that right now. This slide is is sharing the certified excess and deficiency, which is like I mentioned, very similar to the free cash number we just received our. The results of the F Y twenty-one E and D, which was certified at three million, seven hundred and four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. This budget, we estimate that we'll be using two million, forty-five thousand, which is the same as we used in F Y nineteen and twenty. And that would be fifty-five point two percent of the E and D that's available. I'm gonna just. If you can take a look at these, they're the protection enrollment for elementary. I'm not going to go through each one, but in general, they're. Good average class sizes across the board. Next slide. As projected middle school enrollments, average class sizes for Hawthorne Brook and for Nissett Tisset. And the projected high school. At seven eighty-five is the estimate based on. The eighth grade and a projection of eighth grade coming, a certain number of eighth graders coming up to the ninth grade. Next slide. Overall, the budget summary. Is at sixty-one and a half million, three point oh six. In this broken out into these functional categories, administration, instructional support, pupil services. Which includes transportation. Operations and maintenance, insurance and retirement, debt service, and out of district assessments. If this budget has a transfer to other O P E B, which is other post-employment benefits. Of a hundred and fifty thousand and a hundred thousand as a transfer to a stabilization fund, which we we established last year at the annual town meetings. Next slide. This is just a visual breakout of how the budget is allocated, instructional support being the the biggest section. Followed by the insurance and retirement programs, so forty-five percent for instruction, seventeen percent for insurance retirement. We have out of district schools, state and state assessments of twelve percent. Operations and maintenance of eight percent of our budget, pupil services, which includes transportation of eight percent. Administration of three percent, and the other post-employment is less than a percentage.
And just the conclusion piece is again, as with every year, we we work to put forward the budget that we think is necessary for a strong educational program and agenda. For the school district, realize it's a challenging fiscal environment, and we will continue to look at our priorities and make adjustments if needed at this point in time. Our budget message has not changed. We feel we're very committed. To this particular budget that we've that we're presenting this evening in the three point zero six percent increase. But realize that there may be a need to make reductions. We're hoping that 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 is not the case. As always, classroom teachers and class size are going to remain important for us, as is professional learning and program evaluations. Serving at North Middlesex student within North Middlesex is our goal. We want what's best for our families and our schools. Equity does not mean equal. By that, I mean that there are some students that require more of our teachers and services in order to meet the needs. Of the students themselves and the rigorous standards that the state puts forth and the rigorous standards that N M puts forth. Quality early education programming is an integral part of the public school system. Obviously, we're going to remain committed to technology and providing a quality teaching and learning environment. And that it's necessary to have an agile central administration to serve a complex school population. And we can take questions at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks to Nancy. Any questions from the committee? Susan?
Yes, you'd mentioned that the Fallon Health was no longer being offered. That's one of the most cost-effective help health plans, right?
Yes, it's it was it was the lower cost of the the two, the three options.
Okay.
It is is likely it is planned to be replaced with a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Which is also looking to be a relatively affordable, although more than the Fallon Plan was.
Okay, so if are any of our employees on Fallon's switch. It's gonna cost them and the district a little bit more.
Correct. And and I think right now that the number that's in the budget is sufficient. That's just, I need to rework it and go through and spend a little more time on that. So maybe there'd be, you know, some some thought process on on what scenario we use, but. The employees would have the option to during open enrollment to shift to both either. The new plan that's available, Blue Cross Blue Shield, or the Tufts or the Harvard Pilgrim. Option.
Okay. And then. For the the population split, I saw that Ashby went up. What do you have in the new? Like Pepperell has this percent of the students, tell them as this percent number.
Yeah, it's on that slide, actually, if we want to back back up to that slide.
I missed it.
Nancy, could we back up to the? Maybe.
Which number slide is it?
It's one with that that I corrected earlier today. But the enrollments and the percentages for the member towns.
So foundation enrollment.
Foundation enrollments.
I was trying to look through my. Notes.
Coming up to it. One more, one more. Sorry, it's not it, no.
Nope.
Over.
Must have passed it.
Keep going.
I've hit all the slides.
Oh.
Both both backwards.
All right, hold on.
I'm looking at the slide myself.
Well, the hard copies and the hidden slides are different.
Oh, that's right.
We leave it in. We had we had extra slides just in case.
You go back to the, I think, the bar, the the line graph, right? Could we not?
Yeah, I I can just, I can just say what it is.
Okay.
Some reason it's not in there. I don't know where it is.
See, I have it if you want me to.
Historical enrollment, the foundation enrollment one, this is it?
No. The percentages I'm looking for.
Did just to answer Susan's question, Ashby makes up twelve point eight two percent for F Y twenty-three. Pepperell forty, forty-six point nine seven. And Townsend forty point two one.
Okay.
And the student numbers to go with that, Ashby's at three hundred and ninety-three. Pepperell's at fourteen forty. And Townsend is at twelve thirty-three.
Let's just review.
For a total of three thousand sixty-six.
And the the shift that we've talked about is that Ashby's overall percentage of the district. Is now one point one five percent higher than it was last year. Pepperell's is lower, but keep in mind that. And Townsend is is lower as well, but keep in mind that Pepperell is fifty percent of the district and they lost, they gained fifteen students and Ashby gained forty-four students. So when you have a shift like that, you'll see they.
Right, yeah, Ash Ashby got a double whammy with their the state changing their minimum local and then their student percentages.
Right, and their and their municipal growth factor also increased.
Okay. So that's, that's all I have for now. I want to give other people a chance to ask questions. I won't hog.
Thank you, Susan. Just before June, we got to you real quick. Nancy, the Fallon Health change, was that. Related to Fallon's discontinuance of their commercial lines or is that a district decision to get ahead of?
Discontinuation of Fallon.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're moving on to, I believe, the or the government.
Yep.
Market.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, June.
Thanks. I am just wondering what we can do to help Ashby with this because. That's a huge increase for town, our size, and I I know there's some other Ashby representation on here, so I don't want to speak for everyone, but. I do want to just throw it out there that we probably need some help with this and what can we do? And I know this is based off the regional agreement too. So is there a way that we could? Amend it, and if not in time for this year. Amend it and if not in time for this year, perhaps for next year's budget season? Just so we don't see giant jumps like this. It was mentioned doing it like a five year rolling average would would be a better way to calculate that, just so no towns. Would see a huge increase or a huge drop. Everybody could plan a little bit better. Um, if we did something like that. So I know it's it's pretty tight for the season, but is it? Is it still possible to for something to look at to amend it or would that be completely off the table? And if. May, I mean, maybe we could, you know, look at this a few different ways. I know our E and D was a little bit higher this year, so potentially. I I know we don't like to to touch it if we can, but. In this unusual circumstance, perhaps that's something that we could look at. Doing, I just wanted to throw those options out there, but I'd be interested in hearing other ideas as well and. I'm interested in hearing from the towns as well, so.
So, yeah, I I don't think we have an, we have an answer right now. I know that in order to get Ashby down to something. That's reasonable. Again, if we're talking in the area where Pepperell and Townsend are. Where we're likely looking at well over a million dollars. Just to get down to that level. So several hundred thousand dollars, which would, which would, which would result in in reductions. As opposed to increases, most likely just because of the way the budget is set up. Um, Nancy has reached out to the. To the to Mars. The Regional State Organization, she's reached out to Desi, she's reached out to the state. We are looking to see what, if anything, can be done and to see what type of assistance. Can be provided, but we do not have any answers at this time and it's possible that there aren't. Any answers other than just having to having to make some difficult decisions with regard to the budget. I do think we obviously we have to continue to look at the regional agreement. And try to update that because I think a five year rolling average would certainly be more beneficial than the way it is right now. Nancy, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Pains.
I guess just in case somebody isn't aware when if we were to have an amendment or a. A revision to the regional agreement will require all three towns vote. At their annual town meeting, so it's it's not a school committee decision, it would be that the member towns would have to vote that. And it would have to pass prior to the budget passing, obviously, because that would change. The speech each town's assessment potentially. So it's it's tricky. It's not impossible, but it would be tricky to get it done. With language that everybody is agreeable to and through that process to notify the the member towns and do a. About what the update would look like and what would change and then have the town meeting votes. Just wanted to share that.
Susan?
Obviously, before we even. Go down that road, we want to see how much a change like that really changes the outcomes this year. Five year rolling average could this particular year really not be beneficial at all? I mean, in theory, it would be, but we'd be curious to see. Even what that would look like. Because I've always been in favor of that idea. Because it does smooth out the bumps for all towns.
I'm just not sure it's possible this year because of the way the town meetings are set up and the budget adoption process in March. By the school committee. Nancy, were you talking about in the future or this year?
I was just talking in general what had to happen in order for us to to get through that.
Okay.
No.
It would, like I said, it would have to be however we did it, whether it was this year or a future year. I know we started working on the regional agreement. I'm sure Randy's got her hand up for that.
All right, Randy.
Yeah, it would be almost impossible to get it done for this year, not just because of the budget season. And the that process, but because we actually have to get any changes approved by the state before we bring them to. The towns. There's a whole process the state. Needs us to go through and get approvals before we can even go to the town meetings. So I am going, I will. You know, start doing the regional agreement again, trying to figure out the changes that we need and that would be acceptable and and get the input from the community. So we can start that process, but it certainly would not be for this year.
Thank you, Randy. I'd also just be concerned just because of the budget summits. That I think we've set certain expectations already with. With the towns, I'd be concerned about their assessments drastically changing in the in the other direction. But I agree, I think we've. Got to look at some creative solutions. Anybody else from the committee? Susan, is your hand still up or back up?
No, I put it down to give other people a chance and. It went back up.
Go for it.
So please, if anyone has any other questions. No, I mean, I certainly would be curious just to see what it did. I agree with Randy. I mean, we can. We simplify that. We have a lot of things that we're looking at with a regional agreement just to clean it up. But um. If it. If it changed the way things look in a way that everybody found agreeable, which. Probably not, but I think it's at least just. Worth seeing what it looks like. I think if anything, it's illustrative to. All the towns that if they had a sudden jump in population. The kind of difference it could make for them. Doing a five year rolling and it's not something we would pop in and out of. Oh, this year we'll do five year and next year we won't. It's intended to be a long term, long, long outlook. A change if it's something we want to do, but I think this is illustrative of. How a bump can really change things, but Ashby also has the state. That changed them due to other factors. It's not just their population shift. Okay, the other half of that and a half, but the other question I had. Am I looking at this right, Nancy? I dug into the detailed budget and I was looking at it like not detailed by function code. Find thirty-three hundred is transportation. Is that? Regular transportation only or are there other things? In there? That three point, well, basically four million. On twenty, oh, thirty-three hundred, I'm sorry.
Believe it's both. Hold on, let me just confirm that.
Because I was looking at that like, okay, it's almost four million dollars. In the budget for transportation. The state's given us one million and the assessments are three million. So, yeah, three million assessments, one million from the state, but seems like the state's only providing twenty-five percent of our transportation costs.
That that it's both. Uh, that includes the. Regular transportation and the special ed transportation. They reimburse the regular ed transportation greater than a mile and a half only, so. Um, the 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 number that you're seeing in the that category of thirty-three hundred includes. Um, a million, just over a million eight for regular transportation. And. For special education. Transportation. We're estimating. Just over two million, two million, one twenty-five.
Okay, so I know I've heard Brad's comments in the past that. You know, the state isn't including special education transportation. And what the numbers they're looking at for reimbursing us. And the big question is, why not? That's a big chunk that we're spending that. I believe we should be reimbursed for. And.
So so they did make a change to the the special education calculation and allowed us to claim them. The cost of transportation in it, there's a threshold, so it's. It's the threshold. The amount over the threshold for transportation can be claimed, but typically and it's it's students that hit that threshold, so. They may or may not hit the threshold depending on what program they're in.
Oh, is this like circuit breaker kind of idea?
It is circuit breaker, actually. It's through that program, so there's there's some funding. That we could look at in circuit breaker. It's. It just needs to be sustainable, so I'll take a look, a closer look at that. For for the. You know, the seventh, March seventh, to see if we can take advantage of any of that.
But it's um, it's not that we're going to get more money from the state, it's. Reserves, I guess probably not the right word to use.
Well, it is, it is funding from the state for circuit breaker if we if we utilize that.
Oh, oh, okay.
It we we typically use that circuit breaker funding for tuitions and again, you get a reimbursement back for if you hit a certain threshold and I believe it's. Don't quote me on this, but somewhere just over forty-seven thousand. So if you hit that forty-seven thousand dollar number. They they'll reimburse us for the amount over that. A percentage, whatever the, again, that's part of the state budget process, so it could be a percentage that's seventy-five percent, eighty percent. Sixty percent, I don't think, but seventy-five percent is typical.
I think years and years ago, they had a crazy low year, like thirty percent or something. But uh, go out of here, it's within that range. Checking my notes here, I think that answers the questions that I have. Although it is, I remember. Way back long ago, the. It was about fifty fifty split between what the. The towns paid and what the state paid. And I was, looks, it looks like the state now is paying more like. Thirty-five to thirty-nine percent depending on how you cut it. So it's. Disappointing that it's a much lower percent than they did. And whatever fifteen years ago is. The mid two thousands.
Yeah, Susan?
That was the end of my questions.
All right, thank you. Nancy, I just had a question on the. The amount going to E and D at. Or the, I guess the balance, it was three, I think it was three point two last year and three seven. So what what drove that? Almost, so I guess four hundred fifty thousand dollar difference? Was there a single? Thing that contributed to that or?
I think some of the the contribution towards that was potentially COVID because of the. Um, spent the way the spending worked last year, and I think you'll see, I'm guessing some of the towns had funds that were not able to be used. Because of the way we were operating in the hybrid and the remote, that's part of it. We had some revenue closeout as well. We also got another. Contribution from the the collaboratives. So I can, I can pull that number apart a little bit more for the committee. At some point.
Yeah, I. It just seems like so long ago. I didn't realize that why FY twenty-one was would have been that COVID time, so.
It's from the the activities ending June thirtieth, twenty-one.
Right. All right, thank you. Anything else from the committee before we go on to public? Comments?
No, I guess I just had. I had wanted to ask this, but that reminded me, I forgot was about the the funds that we received from COVID. Are there still? Some unspent? Funds? That we can use? Which is one time money or? Or that we're planning to use outside of this budget?
I think, I I think the caution and and what we're going to need to look at is is there anything in the budget that could be is considered a one time expense. I know this. We talk about this each year. Last year, we did do that. We utilized. Some school choice funding, some additional school choice funding to fund a curriculum program. Again, one time. In theory, but each year it seems we have a curriculum program, so. It's a one time ish, I guess, and that that's something we definitely will look at to see if there's anything that could be. Isolated. Um, that would make sense if we only have to buy this once, we maybe we could use some one time funds for that. It's just that the danger of of putting a significant amount of E and D in is there's several things. One. Next year, we won't have that same significant E and D and it'll be an increase for all three towns next year. It'll feel like an increase for all three towns. Because we'll have less revenue. It also is, again, the district doesn't have a lot of funding source. We don't have, we're just starting a stabilization account right now. We don't have any other. Sort of buckets of money in the background that we we use when we actually, when we go to borrow money, they look at that and they say, how how? Much of reserves do you have? And you want to make sure that is healthy so that when you do go out to borrow. You get good rates, which we just got a good rate for the for the short term borrowing. We just did a great rate. So that will be, we'll be settling the the high school project, the accelerated repair projects and and we will be doing a long term borrowing, I believe. Hopefully, if we get all those projects closed out and our final MSBA payment comes in, we'll be doing a long term borrowing, which we would want to be looking. Like we're in the best position we can be in. And one of the questions, and Brad sits in on these, but one of the questions they always ask are, what are the pressures are you? You know, for using funding to support the budget like that. So you end up, you know, ends up, you can see over time from FY fourteen to FY twenty-one, we've obviously increased how the reliance on this funds. We're closing out more funding because we're about, we're about just bigger. Budget management wise, but it's. Again, it's it gets we get relying on this one time source and it's just, it's just something to be concerned with. You have to keep an eye on it, so.
All right, thank you. So open it up to. Comments, questions from the public again, please use the raise hand feature. Uh, on Zoom and we'll need you to state your full name and address. And if you're a member of a town. Committee or board, if you could let us know. That as well. I'm going to try to use the, it looks like an allow to talk option in Zoom, so. Um, we'll go with the Ashby Select Board. Uh, member and hopefully we'll be able to hear you.
Hi, good evening. This is Mike Bustle.
Hey, Mike.
Actually, the interim town manager. Sorry, I signed in on a different sign in.
No worries.
But just want a couple of views from Ashby. It's very important. As we talk about this budget, we're talking about. A three point oh six increase on a sixty million dollar budget. We talk about a two and a half percent increase on our budget for eight million dollars. So there's already a dramatic deficit when you're creating your budget versus even any community. In the district creating their budget that they're. You know, we look at two and a half as being, you know, a goal to strive to. And coming in at three point oh six really is a concern. Like you folks, we have contractual obligations with our folks. We have some but minimum budgeting, we have folks that are under contracts, we have. Just like everybody has, so we have the same. Difficulties that you're seeing. So I would, I would ask everybody that, you know, is a part of this. Budget committee, pay attention to that. Three percent of sixty million is is massive compared to. Two and a half percent what towns receive from pick a town, even your biggest town of Pepperell. Not even close to sixty million dollar in revenue, so just a point out. We talk about picking up forty-four students. It's a little over one percent of the of the whole district. One percent. I would think that in any business you can grow one percent without having major. Growing pains. How do you, how do you spread that across the district to absorb that? We probably have at least a half a percent a year, so you really picked up a little over a half to three quarters of a percent. So what I'm trying to point out is the dramatic. Increase that Ashby has seen for one year that years we did have, we do have extra students. Uh, we're actually finally starting to grow a little as a community, which is great. We've kind of been a little sleepy town for many years. And just with the, whether it's houses that are being sold or the new homes that are being built. We've had some more, you know, younger generation moving into our community, which is great. We'll be over time, hopefully be able to figure out how to absorb that, but. To absorb it in a one year increment is is very difficult for us. Because the the. Because the, the increase you're talking about is well past what we received in revenue. And the, the um, the, the impact is going to be dramatic to the community. We were only eight last year with this, uh, this year we're currently in with our budget. We ended the budget season, we put ten thousand dollars into stabilization. You're asking us to come up with a hundred ninety eight thousand in addition to our normal assessment for this year. It's gonna be very difficult in our community to absorb that. We're gonna, we're gonna have to make some dramatic decisions uh that will probably hurt. You, you, when you create your budget, you, you are creating a whole budget, you're asking for a whole budget. We as a community try to ask for a whole budget, but we're on the receiving end. We're gonna have to see a reduced budget based off of uh, call it a department in our community looking to fund their budget as a whole. So I, I would ask that they take a hard look. There's a lot of great ideas out there on how to absorb this. We're not trying to get out of our obligation, which we're asking for help on. How do you absorb that, even if it's over, over time? Because the bill's not gonna go away by us all discussing it tonight. The bill is the bill. We just have to, I guess, really look hard and try to help each other uh through this process. Because it's important. This is gonna um, it have a major effect on, on the, the uh community of Ashby at this point. The services that we're able to provide because two hundred thousand dollars, over two hundred thousand dollars is, is probably a good portion of a lot of people's budget in this community. So trying to absorb that across uh the town will be difficult. I would ask that we look at, when you create a budget, your budget went up three percent or you're asking for three percent. You didn't, you didn't fund the E and D at three percent. Why wouldn't we try to do that? You, you're gonna pick up, you can see it on the screen, four hundred thousand or more i- in excess um um on, on your E and D. And, and look at the E and D. Your E and D is technically what was left over from last year's budget. So if you can look at ending your year, I wish I could end my year with a three million seven hundred thousand extra in my budget. That's, it's unheard of. It's really, it, there's an opportunity to take a hard look and really make some good decisions, I'll say, not tough decisions. Make some good decisions to help your communities. I'm not just speaking for Ashby, but Pepperell and Townsend, I'm sure will, will have similar um, you know, concerns to get through this budget season. But I, I would ask, and we talked to Nancy on a regular basis. She's trying as hard as possible to look at every avenue to try to see what we can do, you know, uh, to help soften this, this particular year. Like I told you, we're not trying to get out of our, our debt is our debt. We're a community, we're very responsive to what we, what we're obligated to. But we're asking for some help to get through this and, and then how to manage it? How do we manage it as a community in the future? Very important. We've had a lot of great discussions. Uh, we'll continue to have the discussions and we'll try to uh all work through this. But what, what I'm asking tonight is uh, continue with some additional uh, you know, hard look at the budget to really help us get through this, this budget season with the school uh this year. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. I, I appreciate that. Um, I don't know, Nancy or, or superintendent, is there anything you wanted to say before we move on?
Just so, obviously, we're gonna continue to, to look at the budget and do what we can. I'm, I'm just not sure how we can get the number down this year to a manageable number.
Susan, do you have a question or comment? No. Right, um, next we have Mr. John Ladek.
Yeah, I was muted. I'm sorry. The, I just wanted to make sure, is it Mark from Ashby that we were looking at the same numbers? Because what I'm seeing is that Ashby's increase, if you look at operating assessment plus the transportation assessment is over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than last year? Is that the number you're talking about or were, were you talking about a different number?
Uh, no, it should, it should be that number.
Okay, I thought, I heard you say something about two hundred thousand and I just wanted to make sure I was following you.
Okay, no, you're correct.
The four hundred and fifty, okay, thank you.
Right, Susan. Thanks again, Mike. Uh, John?
Hi, John Ladek, sixteen John Street, Pepperell. I'm on the Pepperell Finance Committee. Um, I think there's a number of areas you could maybe look at. I'm not quite sure why you have to add five point seven six full time equivalents to the budget. I also looked at um the function chart you put out, the budget by function. There's a number of areas there that are well over five percent. And I think some of those deserve a, a close look. For instrument, for instance, the principal's office is over a hundred thousand dollars up. Um, teacher specialist is eleven percent increase. Power professionals is a nine point eight percent increase. Um, outside develop, professional development is a two hundred and thirty nine percent increase. It's not a lot in terms of dollars, but it's about seventy five thousand dollars that could uh be split between the towns as a savings. Uh, there's a couple of others. Uh, classroom instructional technology is up by twenty five percent. Guidance and adjustment services is up by thirteen point seven two percent. Health services is up by twenty one percent. Um, building a security system, you have a brand new school. It seems like some of that should have been in there. Seventy nine per, um, that's a two hundred and three percent increase. And the last one that I could, I looked at real quick was technology, infrastructure, maintenance and support. Um, that's up by twenty three percent. So those are some big jumps. And I think they deserve a second look by you folks to see if they're really necessary. Thanks for the chance to talk.
Thank you, John. Anybody else from the public? Or anybody else at that point? See somebody else from Ashby Select Board number two?
How you doing this evening? My name's David Nato. I'm uh on the board of selection for the town of Ashby. And um, I just want to say first, thank you for what all you guys do and ladies. Um, second, the over twelve percent increase for Ashby just is not gonna work for our budget. Um, I understand you guys are gonna have to make some tough decisions, but uh that would be detrimental to our town and our residents in Ashby. And to go back on Mr. Ladek, if I'm saying your name correct, is it that you would be adding five point six individuals to the payroll? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, how many individuals were added last year?
Nancy, do you have that? Do you by chance have that number? I don't have it in front of me.
That's it, Brad, that's okay. That's okay, Nancy. Um, just to give you what we would be looking at, you would be looking at adding five point six. But with a budget increase of over twelve percent, we would probably look at decreasing our staff in town, which would also be detrimental to the, um, so I would just like, um, you know, just careful consideration. And when uh looking at these numbers again, I hope, um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it.
I don't ever want to make a cut.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else? Committee, public administration or otherwise? Diane? Diane, you should be able to unmute yourself. All right. Last chance, any comments from anybody? I guess Nancy, a question for you, just I know in the past, um, money has been moved. I shouldn't say moved, but there's been different classifications um in the budget, which has resulted in certain line items looking like they've increased or decreased dramatically. When in reality, it was just a classification change. Did we have any of that this year? You're muted, Nancy.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, we'll get this one of these days. I think there was some air, uh, again, it was all in instructional areas here, uh, twenty two twenty department heads. Was prior, was in twenty one twenty, I think that's the line that moved. So there, there has been some of that. Um, I think the biggest thing was really last year, which was moving uh the IT instructional administrative technology, the fourteen fifty. We used to be all instruction, all IT costs that moved, um, to, a lot of that moved down to forty four hundred. So I think, uh, I'll, I'll look at that a little more. Those are the ones that come to mind right off the top of my head.
I appreciate that.
Not too many this year, honestly.
Looks like we have Eldon, uh, and your name just disappeared when I clicked, no, Garhart, if you want to go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, Eldon Garhart, um, on the finance committee here in Ashby. Um, I, I'm, realize that this is kind of echoing the sentiment of everyone that has spoken on behalf of Ashby. But it is a very dire situation to us because we are in need of a lot of upgrades for equipment. Uh, towns uh pay for employees or else we could very easily have a very deteriorated infrastructure for the town. Um, I was wondering if there's any way we could have a united front and address maybe the state say, hey, maybe you could kick in a little bit more for transportation or, you know, is there something that we can do as a team? And go to the state and talk to them or are there even federal options that we could pursue to help cover some of these costs?
Bernton, do you want to speak to that? I know we've tried to unite a front on the transportation piece prior and had mixed results.
Sure, so yeah, um, we, we have, we, we have tried to address this at the state level with the transportation piece previously and we have not been successful. Um, the regional transportation uh component does impact the district and, and all of you as taxpayers uh pretty significantly. And unfortunately, um, one of the reasons it's not moving forward to follow through on, on the original promise of fully funding regional transportation is that there are many in the state legislature that feel as though regional school districts should be paying full freight for transportation, just like a comprehensive uh school district. So um, a- a- again, um, i- i- it is different. N- Nancy has certainly reached out. Um, we are trying to find out if there is anything that can be done because honestly, just to put a number to it, r- right now, to, to get Ashby down to a nine percent assessment would, for all intents and purposes, be a one million dollar cut to the budget proposal. And to get Ashby down to a five and a half percent assessment would be a two million dollar reduction to the proposed budget. So there are certain aspects of the budget that we cannot control. And things that, things that, you know, we, I, I, it's, it's just beyond our control uh with, whether it be some contracts, whether it be health insurance, transportation, both regular and special education transportation. So that would entail s- significant cuts across the board. Um, we are hopeful that there's another way that, um, you know, possibly, you know, in, in, it's something we're committed to do. We are committed to continue to work with the state to find out, is there something that can be done to avoid this type of a jump for a small town? Um, believe me, there's not, um, I, I don't think any of us feel as though that Ashby can afford this increase nor could really any towns. So i- it's something that, that we are committed to working towards and hopefully we'll be able to find a solution. I just can't, I just can't guarantee it, but we will continue to work on it.
Okay, um, I, I'm come from, I've been in several states and a lot of the states, I guess, basically what, what I'm wondering is, could we approach the state and have, as, as even with other school districts? And maybe try to remove the, a seat for every child in the transportation system? Because I've lived in many states where if you want your child to go, you just pay a monthly charge for your child to be on that bus. Because, you know, you go by the school and, you know, the parking lots are full of cars. And when you're teenagers, you drive to school. So I think we're paying for, the problem is paying for a lot of empty seats is what I think the issue is. And if we could either increase the routes that a single bus takes or something along those lines, I think that would help. And I don't know if we would be able to work with other school districts to kind of come at the state and say, hey, look, we as education system in the state would like this to be changed to at least, you know, it, it's a drop in the bucket, but it, it's a pretty big drop. If we could get something along those lines where the people that use pay for type aspect.
Right.
All right, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, um, I, I think the biggest obstacle that we face is that regional schools are by far the minority in the state. The great majority of school districts are comprehensives. Um, and regionals continue to not get the voice that is needed. We're not even allowed to charge, um, you know, if we're reimbursed seventy percent, we're not, we're not even allowed to charge families the thirty percent difference that we're not getting back. That is not allowed. So i- i- it would entail changing a mass general law that outlines uh the state transportation guidelines for regionals. It's, it's actually a specific law that would need to be changed um in, in order to move away from this. The one that guarantees every student has a seat on the bus.
Okay, well, thank you for the time. I appreciate the ability to speak and thank you for the great answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Eldon. Diane, I had you next.
Hello, did it work this time?
It worked, Diane, you're, you're on.
Okay, um, this is Diane Rollo. I teach it um at Ashby Elementary. I was just wondering if you could go back to the slide that showed the projected um class sizes for next year. And then I know it was talked about last year about mentioning maybe um having some of the people from either West Townsend or Townsend join Ashby. And it was brought up last year, but then it was never brought up to like the parents and it hasn't been brought up again this year. So I was wondering maybe when that might be brought up so that we could help the numbers in Ashby just for class size to make them, you know, have more sections available than just one.
So the, so that would, Diane, that would entail a policy, a district policy change. Because it would, for all intents and purposes, be changing um the policy on school assignment. So the, it is, a- a- again, it could be an optional type thing right now where choices put out to parents. But the obstacle's going to be is the parents would have to transport their own children because busing would not be provided unless there was a change in the policy that would allow for um the assignment to school policy to change.
All right, I was just wondering, because I know it was brought up when we were talking about, you know, not closing Ashby and, and making our numbers bigger, that it was just mentioned last year, but, and then it was never mentioned again. So I was wondering if that was going to ever change.
It's something that's definitely under consideration with the politics committee. But again, it needs to, um, we, we need to make sure that we're able to do it and that it makes sense. And right now, that, that, the choice aspect would entail parents having to drive their kids from West Townsend to Ashby. Which, again, i- unless it was a convenience piece to it of, you know, if it was on someone's way to work or something like that, I guess. or something like that, I guess it's possible. But I think transportation would need to be provided, which would enact additional costs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Diane. David, did you want to say something? And then Susan and then I don't know if Ashby Select Board still has a question.
Sorry, I wanted to get back to, is it, is it Elgin? I'm sorry, I want to make sure I get that name correct.
Eldon.
Eldon, excuse me, um, so there was a few other things to the, I think, kind of the biggest hang up with our budget that people don't seem to get is the transportation thing. This has been the bane of all of our existence for a few years now. Especially because it's, we don't get a ton of competitive offers. Sorry, we get one, we get one offer that's not very competitive for buses. So we've looked into a variety of different ways to kind of circumvent that, whether it's talk to other districts potentially about, you know, forming a coalition of buses or, you know, like how could we buy our own buses, any of those kind of things? So, so we've been, we've been looking into it, we've been pushing it. You brought up, could we possibly extend the bus routes? I know for Ashby, one of the pieces of feedback that I hear most frequently is that the buses, especially to the middle school are quite long already. So that's also a pretty big concern, but I'm wondering, then the superintendent might be able to answer this. But if we do we even have, I guess thirty percent of our district students riding the bus? Is what would be the possibility of getting rid of? I guess the other seventy percent of that funding and then just doing a, a charge to those who want to use the buses?
Oh, again, that would be, that would be a change to the general law right now. We have to ensure a seat to every student as a regional school district, provided that at any point in time, even though a family may elect not to take the bus, if they're entitled by law to change their mind and we have to have a seat for them on that bus.
Yes, no, I understand that, but is that, is that just with regards to us getting the seventy percent compensation? Or if we got like zero percent compensation from the state, would we have to then provide a seat to everybody on the bus?
You want to say refuse it?
We, we don't have the option to do that unless the law changes.
Okay, thank you.
But we can't refuse the money and do what we want.
No.
I still question.
I mean, I, I guess we could refuse the money, but we can't do what we want. So then we'd be losing the money and not having any benefit.
I still question the interpretation of providing a seat to every student and if we ran, I mean, just for the sake of argument, half of the buses we ran today to, to make their capacity on the bus more full as, as the, and have different routes, obviously. And then additional families wanted to use the bus, we would still have the ability to offer them seats. We just wouldn't be able to offer seats immediately if a hundred percent of the students overnight. So I don't know if that's a, again, a possibility where we have the ability to offer seats to every student and maybe end up doing a second run if, again, in the off chance a hundred percent of students elected to take the bus one day. But I don't know if you have to offer a seat to students simultaneously.
So, so it's my understanding, I met with Representative Harrington last year. I've had meetings with the state auditor and the solicitor general, both of whom have made it quite clear that the current governance does not have an appetite for entertaining any changes to regional transportation. The other piece would be is that if any changes are made in talking legal counsel as well, we have to make sure that we have a seat immediately for anyone that wants a seat. And that would also enact potential problems with not having enough drivers and not having enough buses. Because if the buses aren't being used, they're going to turn them in and cancel the leases on them. And if we do cut buses, if we cut down to what we really needed based on capacity, we would have significantly longer bus rides for most of our students. Especially in Ashby and Townsend, the bus rides would be very, very long at the middle and high school level. And again, there's no savings at the high school level, we actually need less buses, but we don't save any money by cutting buses at the high school level because all bus drivers are paid a full day's wage or else they wouldn't have bus drivers to drive the buses. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that we need more buses really, realistically for the elementary level. And even though we may need less at the high school because there are student drivers, those drivers are still getting paid. They're still getting paid a full day's salary, otherwise the D bus would not be able to employ them. And they already have a health shortages that is, so we are, we're, we're basically paying for a full bus, a driver every day and there's also no difference between a large bus and a small bus in price. It's the same price in the contract. And like Mr. Carney mentioned, we only get one bid a year.
Thank you. David, do you have anything else? Nancy, did you have anything? I saw your hand up briefly, you're good.
No, I was just gonna reiterate with Superintendent Morgan said about having to run for elementary buses and the number of students.
Perfect, thank you. Susan?
I just had a question for Brad and Nancy Haynes. I'm being stalked by my cat here, I'm sorry. Have you through any of your statewide professional organizations ever heard of a town successfully appealing? Sorry, their minimum local contribution to the state? I'm wondering if Ashby can argue, not, you know, appeal to the state and say, no, spread this out over time at least. If there's ever been any towns or if you can check with your organizations to see if there's ever been any, been any towns that have successfully appealed the number they were assigned or at least were successful in getting it, getting it more dragged out over time. Or you could look into that perhaps?
We can look into it. I have not heard of anything, Nancy, have you?
No, I haven't. One of the, one of the things they did offer was if there was anyone, if there was any subgroup or, or group from Ashby or whatnot that wanted to walk through any of those numbers, they would be available to assist for answering questions and going through that process. So if that was of interest, I could look into that and maybe we could find a time and a group that wanted to walk through those details. But my understanding is that's, it's the formulas applied to the, to all towns in the state very similarly. So the only thing that I said that could potentially change is through the state budget process. Sometimes they look at how close a town is to their target share and that number gets adjusted or changes through the process. So there's, there's hope potentially that maybe those numbers could potentially change, but what often happens is that happens after we have to set our budget. So it's not helpful, but then last year, I think our budget, the state budget didn't get settled until sometime close to after July. So it's a challenge. If we had no, if we could knew what those numbers were now, then we could say, oh yes, we would have a savings coming or something that the House is looking at or the Senate's looking at. But right now I haven't heard of anything. I do have an association meeting tomorrow where the state's gonna do a presentation on the, the budget and the state budget process and hopefully maybe there'll be some news there.
Okay, thank you Nancy. And perhaps the Select Board or the Town Administrator in Ashby could, if you also have like a statewide professional organization, could check into that or your local state representation, press on them. Because certainly an eight and a half percent hike to your local is a challenger.
Thank you Susan.
Yeah, can't change how many students you had on October first last year. That's pretty sad.
All right, I see, I don't know if it's Mike or David, I've got one of the Ashby Select Board accounts with with their hand up.
Hi, it's Mike again, sorry.
Mike, no worries.
Thank you Susan for that advice and we will be reaching out to any folks from the state that can help us with this particular situation. But I'd like to ask Nancy Haynes or whomever we can explain, if you can go to the slide for debt services, we have an increase of sixty thousand and two other communities have decreases. Some is equal to that. I just want to understand how that calculation comes to be.
So the, the debt service is getting reset, that it's not updated. It needs to be re-updated based on this borrowing that just happened and it's actually going to go down significantly. So those numbers, don't go by those numbers, I guess, that's the short answer. But the, the way that the debt service is calculated for the regional agreement is it's based on who's in the building, the enrollment October first for that school. So each school is looked at, classic example Hawthorne Brooks looked at how many students are Ashby, how many students are Townsend, how many students are Pepperell, and then that is how the debt service is allocated. I think that's probably the simplest. But, but the, the new numbers will be coming out shortly. I have, I have them, I just, they are still a draft. I'm hoping that we'll have a final, by the time the school committee takes their vote for March seventh, but I do have a draft which I can share with the member towns.
Okay, well, that's encouraging news on that, that front. Is it possible to bring up that one last time, the E and D slide? I just want to point something out with. Okay, thank you. Just if everybody takes a look at, like I asked with the budget, the budget committee, be very cognizant of this when you're dealing with numbers, especially the numbers that you folks deal with, it's a large number. So one percent of sixty million dollars is a lot of money. So you can consistently, if you look at your budget for the last one, two, three, four, five years, you've consistently been at three million dollars over. When you create your budgets, like creating this particular budget, you can almost say next year, we're going to be three million dollars, you know, you know, E and D. Based off of, there's a lot of echoes in it, I get it, you don't have some bills that came in, you don't have some costs that were anticipated. But when you're looking at that, there's a number that you could probably comfortably look at and say, we can tighten up on this because it's about five percent of your budget that you're carrying as E and D on a whole budget. So Brad, you talked about a million dollars would make a huge difference in Ashby. You'd still come out with two point seven million dollars in E and D next year. If, if you take a hard look at this year's budget and are able to reduce it by numbers like that. So I just want to point something out, that's a trend that's consistent. And it's, it's really should be looked at. You, you, you can't, you can run it a little tighter than be in excess of five percent overall based off of a sixty million dollar budget. We're not talking a, a small budget here. So just, just a, I just wanted to point it out because it's important when you're looking at every single opportunity to, to help the budget and help communities within your budget. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you Mike. All right, Susan, do you have something new or you also?
I'll know. Nancy, the, well, to, to the immediate question here, the part, I just want to reiterate, which isn't new. The part of having money in E and D is that it helps get better interest rates on our borrowing, which helps keep some of those costs down, but it is something always to, to look at. We certainly don't want to cut it too low just because it's there for the emergencies. And again, when we use E and D to support the budget that sets up a structural deficit. So the rant, now I know Vanessa, I got the right word there, but eventually that money runs out. So you can't, it's not sustainable to use too much of it, but it's always something to assess. The other thing, the question that was asked about Ashby's debt, I know Nancy, you're surprising the numbers. I think Ashby is still paying off the loans for the work done on the Ashby building, elementary school, is that true?
Uh, no, they're just paying that.
Oh, they're done? Oh, great, thank you. So and the other question is, someone mentioned earlier about the security numbers being up in the new high school. And correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy or Brad, but I believe the security number going up is to address security at the other buildings that are not the high school.
It's not at the high school, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you Susan.
I was quick.
That was quick, I appreciate it. Any other comments from the committee? With the public, going once, twice. Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on the FY twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. I appreciate those that provided input and feedback and comments, we'll certainly continue to look at this and see what we can do based on the feedback received. And again, appreciate everybody's input. You don't have to stop tonight, you may continue to send us important feedback. Finance Committee will continue to meet and then our next meeting on March seventh will be, I think, our vote on the, on the budget for next year. So moving on to, we did not have any public communications requests outside of the hearing. So we'll move on to if he is still on, the student representative report. Is that? Maybe he's not on. Brother Robin DC, our student representative on, I might be missing.
I do not.
So we'll go on to your report then Superintendent Morgan.
Okay, I do not have a report, I just have some items on the new business.
All right, so we'll move on to new business, twenty-two, one, twenty-two school calendar.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the committee to vote to make a slight adjustment to this year's school calendar to move kindergarten screening from Tuesday, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh to Monday, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth and April twenty-sixth. So it's just sliding it from Tuesday, Wednesday to Monday, Tuesday at the request of the elementary school principals.
Does that change the, are those like half days or?
There's no school for kindergarten.
Okay, so it doesn't, so we're just instead of.
Doesn't change anything, it just changes the days, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
But it is a calendar change, so I wanted to bring it to the committee.
All right, I'll take a questions or motion, Susan?
I really liked that we, all the things that were added to the calendar with the school start time and stop time and I appreciate that. I don't know if that is also part of what we're approving or we're just approving shifting the.
All you're doing is shifting the two dates.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Dave and Lisa, any other questions, comments on the calendar? All right, so this is to move the date to the kindergarten screening, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent candidate.
Yeah, so as I chaired with the committee previously, we had twenty-two applicants for this position. A screening committee made up of administration, staff and parents interviewed what ended up being six candidates, we did have two withdraw and they forwarded three candidates to the central office interview team. And that team has unanimously selected Dr. Gary Barboah Reese to be the next Assistant Superintendent and that needs to go to a school committee vote.
Right. All right, any? Questions, comments or a motion?
Um I have a concern that I would, uh I don't know. I don't know what exactly we're allowed to discuss. With regard.
Only allowed to vote. The options are in public session, in open session to vote. And executive session, it would be to discuss the parameters of the contract.
Can we up, oh, sorry, Randy had her hand up.
Yeah, I just, I I think we can discuss professional um. You know, hi- his professional um resume or qualifications, that is something that is open for um public. Uh discussion, if I am correct, I'm not sure. Some of our superintendent, not personality things. Because Brad is right, uh we are uh voting on um approving the assistant superintendent. Uh mainly on qualifications, um a reasonable uh reason not to. Vote yes would be if you feel that he's not qualified for the position, other than that, um this school committee does need to give their approval. Um without undue or unreasonable uh withheld withholding of that um approval. So I would I would guess qualifications are up for discussion.
David, did you have something or is your hand still before? You're muted.
Sorry, are we voting on the negotiation, are we voting on on how much money we are willing to offer? What is it?
So I mean, so the process is that the the. Superintendent makes a recommendation on on a candidate. And this body needs to, as Randy explained, vote to approve that recommendation. Separate from that, this body also sets the salary of that position. And that is separate, that is that is not an open session discussion. So that is a that is a separate matter from approving the the candidate.
If they've wanted to discuss the salary, um. Would be outside. Then uh that you would need to make a motion to do that, uh put it put it on the agenda for executive session. Um I don't think it would qualify for this meeting, it would be at a future meeting.
Yes, a bit of future meeting.
Okay, so. I can request that in a future meeting in an executive session, we discuss the salary options.
Well, we would have to, we have to approve it anyway, so um we would. We would wanna discuss that, I would assume in an executive session before. According to approve that.
Yes. Is it an option, would it be an item that was not reasonably foreseen and within forty-eight hours before the posting? That we could vote to convene an executive session tonight? I'm not quite sure if executive session has different roles uh regarding the timing.
It it does not, it does fall within the forty-eight hour uh period and. I would say it's fair to to say that. It's we're, this is not a uh. An emergency situation of unanticipated business.
Okay.
I mean, wor- worst case, we could call a special meeting for for Wednesday at eight thirty-seven or Thursday evening. If we had to expedite that discussion. And I'm getting a nod from Jessica, so I'm assuming that's accurate information.
Then uh I will make a motion then. I will move that the school committee approve. Uh Gary, for hopefully I'm pronouncing his right name properly, Barboah Reese uh for the assistant superintendent position.
I'll second.
All right, it's Randy and Lisa, any other questions or comments? All right, um. So going down the line, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is also unanimous, thank you. Subcommittee reports or superintendent, do you have anything else?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, you. Lisa, anything on accelerator repair?
No.
Anything on finance?
We will just continue going forward and working on the budget.
Sounds good. Tom, I assume everything's happy in negotiation and personnel line?
Don't jinx that, yeah.
I'll do my best not to, oh.
Did you say that we're working on negotiation or just?
No, I just asked if.
Let's keep it that way.
Was good in that area. Randy, I'll turn it over to you for a bunch of policies.
I could just make one more quick, uh you didn't see my hand go up at the very end of that. Thank you to the search committee um and to everyone who was involved in uh looking for the assistant superintendent. Um and bringing a qualified uh candidate to our. To our, you know, attention and for our vote. So thank you very much for all the hard work. I know the search committees can be. Time consuming, so thank you for your time. Um for policy. Um so we have seven uh policies that we have up for. Um these are all for a second reading, so these are all for adoption. Um the only thing I had not followed up with and I apologize was the IKF graduation requirements as far as. Juniors, there is there is one instance um that I wasn't sure if it was covered uh for. Um dual enrollment juniors on getting the um civic action. Project completed. Um I think uh the high school the last time had said um that it does not need to be within a class. Um so if it's required. I think that we're covered, that they can still get that done and have all the graduation requirements. I would say, Susan, have you heard anything? I don't mean to put you on the spot. So, um all right, uh so I'll leave it up to the uh to the committee on whether you want it to. Um approve IKF graduation requirements tonight or put this off to the next meeting. Uh when I can find that out, and I do apologize for not having that answer tonight. Or uh we can just vote them all in, and if uh we need an exception for this one year, we can probably put something through. Any, so I guess I'll I'll make a motion uh for that one separately, so I make a motion to approve IKF graduation requirements. Uh for adoption as presented. Nancy, I have a question, Meligan.
The we've got, we've got an open motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa.
Sorry.
No worries, do you have a question on that policy, Susan?
I just had a question about the civic project, is that a state requirement, right?
It is, and we're working on language for the program of studies.
I was just trying to remember where the requirement came from, I thought maybe it was from the state, okay.
Any other questions on IKF?
The other half of that is, do you know when that requirement started? Which school year?
So it started during before the year before COVID, but with COVID, it was pushed off because of everything that school districts were going through. So we have been reporting out for the students that had been um provided some of the civic action projects, it's part of our state reporting through. Sims.
So it's the current school year, the first year it was required? Couldn't keep track of COVID versus.
So it went into effect in two thousand nineteen twenty. But it wasn't, but it wasn't fully enacted with um needing a hundred percent participation, and then we went into COVID. For twenty twenty-one.
All right, anything else on IKF? All right, um so this is to approve IKF graduation requirements uh for adoption, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Same.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous with one abstention.
And I'll take the rest of the policies together, there was no comments from anybody in the public or from on the school committee. And there was no questions about these at the first meeting, so I will move that we approve EB safety program. EBV first aid, EBC emergency plans, EBCD. Emergency closings, EC building and grounds management, and ECA building and ground security. For adoption as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments on these? All right, so this is to approve policies EB, EBV, EBC, EBCD, EC and ECA for adoption. Dave?
Nice work, yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes, that is also unanimous, any other business? All right. Um I appreciate everybody hanging in there with the with the hearing. And then we kind of flew through everything else, so I appreciate that. I will uh entertain a motion to adjourn if folks are ready.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Again.
I don't know, Dave didn't seem too sure about that. Um Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
I'm trying to decide, just kidding, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, thank everybody, have a good night, appreciate it, we'll talk to you soon.